Good evening. We welcome you here to council meeting tonight as we call to order our regularly scheduled council meeting. We note that we have six members of the council here. Steve Vincent is excused and will not be with us. With that, we have a full quorum and we will now go to our opening ceremony. We go to Councilmember Karen Lang.
Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under a one individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do not have any scout groups to be used. Stop coming during the summer.
Oh, okay.
Then with that, we go to the next item on our agenda, which is the comment period. And we've had some people sign up, I believe. And so we will go to the public for those comments. And we have one, I guess, who signed up. If anyone else, was there anyone else who wanted to speak? Well, if so, you better let us know, otherwise. Chris, if you'll come up.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Chris Gambrulis, Ivory Development. I'm speaking to you now because my, the item for Ivory Development is scheduled as a resolution item, which is not a public comment period. So I thought I would just, if you wouldn't mind, take a couple of minutes. Hopefully, everyone got the email that I sent out last week, a guest on some of your emails. So hopefully, you all got them. I didn't want to go on the, even though your website is lovely, I thought I'd do something a little different. So, but just wanted to give you an opportunity to think through the development agreement for Park Vista. I know that it had some history here, that there were other applicants that came in looking for rezone application. That wasn't what we wanted to do. But we purchased this property from ATK back in March. We started meeting with the staff in February. We made our preliminary plat application in May. And we are just, if you've looked at the plat, you see where we have those five or, well, actually, we have like seven roads that are existing locations that come into the property, the feet of the property. And we're trying to make connections to interconnect all of those neighborhoods with ours. And, but that means that we are constrained by our geometry of the site and then where the roads come in. And in some cases, it forces us to have very shallow lots. We have a 10,000 square foot lot that's only 90 feet deep. We're going to build a very wide lot. We call them hotbed lots. They're just, they're shallow, they're long. And in some cases, we have 90 feet of depth. In some cases, we have 94 feet of depth, 96. We've got a corner lot where we've got two lots that come in, with two roads that come in, and we're just stock. I mean, those are, other than blocking those roads off, which we think is not a public service, that's the only way to actually fix that, is if we could ignore the outside roads. So what that, what that does is it leaves us with, in many cases, as little as 40 feet of buildable depth. So just to give you, that's a double-wide trailer, is 40 feet deep. A lot of, there are a lot of 40-foot-deep houses in West Valley, and actually, all over the valley for that matter. But they're the Utah split, they're the split-level homes, because they don't take a lot of depth. And when you're building two-story homes and rambblers and you have a 24-foot-deep garage, you know, to go back behind the house and only be able to go 15 feet doesn't leave you with much house. So that's the reason that we're asking for this setback exception on the front, to go to 20 feet. We're not asking for an exception on the rear yard setback. So that is, so in one bucket, there is that issue. And it, it's going to help us build bigger homes. So hopefully, that's enough of an enticement to you, that we'll now have homes that are 50 feet deep, that will fit on lots that are 10,000 square feet, and that's, that's quite reasonable. The other issue that's in the development agreement, it came up after the fact, after we made our application, and actually, we were really kind of caught off-guard at the planning commission, was the issue on the, particularly the exterior materials. And in the meantime, in the interim, you all had passed an ordinance changing the exterior materials. I know there was already, you had a lot of conversations about that, stucco and brick and hardy, cement fiber. I'll try not to call it hardy board, because that is a, that's a brand name, like Kleenex, right? So it's, but it's a cement fiber siding. And so we left our application the same, because we were in the process of doing that. All of our economics were based upon the house plans that we have. So we would ask for your consideration to allow us to build the homes that are in our catalog with the exterior materials, the way that they are, the way that's been presented. I understand that, you know, there's been a lot of debate about that. And I do want to just say that I had the opportunity to go on a bus with Steve Vincent and Corey Rushton about a month ago. There was a National League of Cities and Towns Conference.
About 30 seconds.
30 seconds. And there were representatives from all over the country. And Corey called me and said, "We would like to show them some of the best projects that we've done in West Valley." And went to Highbury and went to Westridge. "We bought Westridge from you." And those are the homes that we want to build here with those same designs and the same exterior materials. So I would just leave that for your consideration and thank you when the resolution comes up. I appreciate a positive, a positive approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Get it with eight seconds to spare. Is there anyone here to speak? Seems not to be. Then we go next to our city manager for comments.
Thanks, sir. I have none tonight. I'm good.
And thank you to the city council for comments. I don't see any, but I, Mr. Pyle, I do have a question for you, since it was brought up in that discussion, and that is roads. Are we required to make all of those connecting roads? Or seven in a subdivision that size, is that difficult?
You know, it seems kind of high. Maybe it would be better, I mean, I'm actually not comfortable to answer that question, Mayor, so I could either have Mr. Pastrick come back up and answer, or maybe when we get to that item, if you want to talk about it there, we could do it then.
Yeah, maybe if he would be prepared to, at that point, be nice. All right. Then we go on to item number six on our agenda. Ordinance number 14-36, amending our municipal code to modify the franchise tax levy rate. I believe this was a required change based upon state statute, went from, was it four to 3.5?
Yes, that's correct, Mayor.
And so we also mentioned here, for those listening in, as well as our couple of visitors here, all of these items that we are now reviewing, we discussed last week in the city council meeting and had thorough discussions on them. So it is not that we don't take time to review those, but we may speak of them less than you might expect here, especially on some of these that are routine, like this one, we need to change it to come through, to put our code into agreement. And it doesn't change our revenues based just upon the way things were working. So with that, we will put it to the city council for comment or action, ordinance number 14-36.
Mayor, I would move for approval of ordinance 14-36.
Councilwoman Lang has placed the motion before us. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilman Bueller. Motion is properly before us. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving ordinance 14-36 to change the franchise tax levy rate in our municipal code, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. We go on to resolutions, item number seven on our agenda. Resolution 14-133, to approve a franchise agreement for a telecommunications network in the city. And actually, I'm actually going to ask Mr. Pyle to actually introduce this one and remind us of it. I went through it and it's not a big thing. This is a routine. We've done it for other companies. But because it involves telecommunications, would you just take two minutes?
You bet, sir. So, Serenga Networks, they are proposing to come in and construct and maintain a telecommunications network. That's the purpose of the franchise agreement. We used to actually see quite a few of these come through back in, well, shortly after the passage of the 1996 Telecommunications Act. You saw a number of them come through. That kind of tailed off over time as some of these businesses came and went, were able to or weren't able to actually construct these networks. Recently, we've seen an increase in the number of applications, or at least interest in providing applications to the city for this. Serenga is actually the first one of that batch that's come through. There are three of them currently under consideration. Just to be clear, so everybody is clear, because we also at the same time have this conversation going on about how West Valley City is participating in our own telecommunications network, the Utopia. This has nothing to do with that. Serenga is a completely private entity that is conducting their own business. They may, or they may not, actually come and actually construct, construct the network. But this franchise agreement would put together the framework under which they could get things like permits, road cuts, that sort of thing, to be able to put that, that network together.
Okay, thank you. To the council then for action or comment.
Mayor, I move for approval of resolution 14-133.
Okay. Councilman Nordfeldt has made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Lang seconded that. The motion is properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving resolution 14-133 to approve a franchise agreement with Serenga Network for their, for a possible telecommunications network in the city, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. We now go to resolution 14-134, to approve change order number one to a contract with Kilgore Contracting for 2014 asphalt overlay project. This, as I recall, was, we already have a plan for next year. This is a change order to that plan. And these are coming from our Class C road funds, an additional $312,000. Although it does require us to approve the contract, it does not change our budget. Fortunately, we don't have to raise any extra money for it. But it allows us to spend that money, which has been previously identified on that, and certainly, there are many areas the city that can use it. With that, to the council then for comment or action.
Mayor, happy to see that 40th West will be paved between 41st South and 35th South. I'll move for approval of resolution 14-134.
Do we have a motion before us? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Councilman Bueller's motion, seconded by Councilman Hume, is properly before us. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place that for a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we go to resolution 14-135, to authorize the purchase of a street sweeper for use by the Public Works Department. And this is on a regular rotation. I believe we have four of those, and the schedule is we replace one each year before the maintenance costs outweigh the benefit and to keep an effective program of keeping our streets clean throughout the city. And so, and again, there, that comes, I believe that the net cost of that is $145,975. And so we will be turning in the old one as a trade-in. Anything else there? I think that's everything. With that then, to the council for comment or action.
Motion to approve resolution 14-135.
Second. We have the motion by Councilman Hume to approve resolution 14-135 and a second by Councilman Rushton. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving resolution 14-135 to purchase a street sweeper for the Public Works Department, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. We go to resolution 14-136. This is a cooperative agreement with the Drug Enforcement Administration with various government entities across the valley, many of the cities in West Valley, the Department of Corrections, including up into Summit County, and of course, with Salt Lake City and their Metropolitan Narcotics Task Force. We have participated in the past, and I believe this, I don't know, I think this is just a continuation. Is that right, Mr. Pyle?
That's correct, sir.
And it is important that we participate in this. Unfortunately, those in the criminal element don't know city boundaries, and so working together on some of these where there are criminal acts and where they do things across city boundaries seems very appropriate and beneficial to our city. So we have that before us. So to the council for discussion or action.
Mayor? Councilman Rushton. I'd like just to ask one, one question here, a multi-part question to, to the staff on this. Going through the, the agreement, I noticed that, you know, we, as we have in the past, will be providing one task force agent to this. Have we, I guess, my question's two-fold. Have we selected that agent? And what qualifications do we normally look for on assigning that officer to this position?
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Rushton. First, I'd like to make a slight clarification. We're actually, we have been one in the past. We're actually increasing, at least for a temporary period, we're going to have, and it might be, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what temporary is, I'll speak, I'll let the chief speak to that. But we're actually going to increase that number to four for the time being, at least. To the other questions, as to has that person been selected and the qualifications for that, I'll refer that to the chief.
Chief, would you introduce yourself?
Yes, Lee Russell, Chief of Police for the West Valley City Police Department. The individuals are currently being screened. We did put out a transfer announcement for task force officers, and they're being evaluated. They're also being evaluated by the joint staff at the DEA Task Force. We're looking to this to be a long-term assignment. It is just beneficial for us to stay in, in close contact and working relationships with our federal partners and our regional partners, dealing with these drug cartels and networks.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Rushton?
I guess just, does it not, I, with page two of the agreement, that it does spell out that we're only participating with one, does that cause any concern moving forward?
We'll check it out. Thanks for noticing that.
Just something that helps.
Yeah, we'll check it.
With that, Mayor, I would move approval of resolution 14-136.
Motion is before us. Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Bueller, a second. Motion now is complete. Any further discussion or comment? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving resolution 14-136, a cooperative agreement with the DEA and other cities and entities in the valley for a combined drug enforcement task force, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. So next, we go to resolution 14-137, to approve an agreement with DLS Consulting to provide professional services during the next fiscal, I guess, the current fiscal year that we're in right now. But this is primarily focused on the legislative session and other related items, for someone to represent us there and assist in those issues facing the city at the legislature. I believe our primary contact there is David Stewart.
Yes, sir.
And so with that, to the council, and this is a continuation. We've had, we have one-year agreements with, maybe the last one is complete or completing, and this will extend another year. And from what they, was indicated, we are pleased with, the work that is being done. It meets the requirements that we place upon them, and so. To the council then for discussion or action.
Mayor, I'd move for approval of resolution 14-136.
The motion is before us. Do we have a second?
I think it should be 137, sorry.
137.
I'll second it, 137.
Okay, yes. It was 137. That was corrected by the maker of the motion. So now we have it there, we have it properly before us, seconded the right resolution. And so, any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote. All in favor of approving resolution 14-137, an agreement with DLS Consulting for professional services, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to resolution 14-138. And that is to the one that we have had a public comment on. This is authorizing the city to enter into a development agreement with Ivory Development. This is the property at 4100 South and 70th West, approximately that corner area, most of it, 26 acres. With this one, because we've had some extensive discussion on that, Mr. Pyle, maybe briefly summarize from there, our discussion from our previous meeting. Would you mind doing that?
You know, Mayor, I would do that, but it's probably a little in more competent hands to turn that over to either Mr. Pastrick or Mr. Lehman. See, okay, if you wouldn't mind, Mayor.
Mr. Pastrick, if you would give a brief touch or...
Mr. Lehman, sorry.
Oh, Mr. Lehman's wanting to do it. Okay, right, one day.
You want the smart Steve or the better-looking Steve?
Thank you. Steve Lehman with the Community and Economic Development Department. As was mentioned, this application is a request from Ivory Development for a project to be known as Park Vista's, as the mayor mentioned, located at 4100 South, approximately 70th West. When Ivory approached the city about developing this property, as Mr. Gambrulis mentioned in his public comments, the site is a little bit challenging, because all the properties surrounding it is zone R18 or smaller. And so the road alignments don't lend themselves to a larger lot subdivision. This is a property that is currently zoned R110. Ivory Homes is proposing to develop the property as it's currently zoned, R110. However, there are three things that they approached staff about, requesting a little bit of relief. The first is, in the far northwest corner of the subdivision, there is a lot that has two intersecting streets. And that lot, it's impossible for that lot to reach the square footage requirement in the zone of 10,000 square feet. The lot is approximately 9,600 square feet and is shy of the 90-foot frontage requirement of the R110 zone. So it's shy by a few feet. The second request is that, as Mr. Gambrulis mentioned, the lots due to the existing road locations are rather shallow, 90 feet, 93 feet, 97 feet. And so, given the depth of their homes and their catalog, to reach some of the larger housing plans, which we as a city would appreciate, they would like to reduce the front setback by five feet. I believe in Mr. Gambrulis's email to the council, it was also mentioned that the rear setback would be reduced, but that is not the case. That would allow them to build a little bit larger home. And the third area that they're looking for relief on is the lot depth requirement along 4100 South. Because this road has an arterial street and is a double-frontage situation where you would have lots backing onto 4100 South, the city ordinances require a little bit larger depth, and that depth is to provide a little bit greater setback, so it's to provide a little bit more of a buffer. In this case, the lots are approximately 107 feet deep. The problem is, if you were to move that road over, you would destroy the developability of those lots on the north side of the other road. So as Mr. Pastrick and myself visited about this, we felt comfortable in going down a development agreement situation with Ivory, in consideration of those offsets. Ivory Homes is proposing their catalog of homes, as Mr. Gambrulis mentioned, keeping the stucco as a primary building material, as opposed to the percentage of material that we currently have in the recently adopted ordinance. They are also proposing to dedicate, excuse me, a portion of the park property, as we've seen last week, as well as providing to the city a 15-foot walkway, so the residents living in the eastern part of the subdivision, as well as those adjacent subdivisions, have better access into the park. Masonry wall will also be constructed along 4100 South, so as to provide that buffer, given the reduced setback from the lot depth. And those are the three primary requests that are being made as part of this development agreement.
Okay. And I'd raised a question on the roads. Would you address that?
Yes. The subdivision ordinance does have a provision that requires any road that is a stub road to an undeveloped property to either continue on as a dedicated right-of-way or terminate in a cul-de-sac. We do not like to see roads that just stop. It's challenging for improvements such as stormwater drainage, if it's a surface drainage situation. In addition, it's a challenging turnaround for either garbage collection, emergency services. So we do have a provision that requires that stub roads are either terminated in a cul-de-sac or extend on to additional rights of way of the city.
Okay, thank you. To the council.
Steve?
There might be some more questions.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that very much. A question about the park.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We're not buying the, paying money for the park, correct? Like, because I did mention, in a study meeting, we're talking about, as you know, it's a Newton property. We discuss in a study meeting, you have to pay $12,000 or something, but here, we're not paying anything, correct?
Correct. The park is dedicated in the little half-circle. As we looked at it, we believed that when that piece was platted, there is a roadway that aligns up with that to the east. We felt that it was probably anticipated that a cul-de-sac would, would come in that area, so it was platted that way many years ago. But Ivory is willing to give that to the city, it's billed as part of the city park. And then they would provide the 15-foot access into the park as well. But we are not expecting, Ivory is not asking the city for funds for that robbery.
Councilman Bueller.
Just a few comments. I appreciate Ivory Homes and the quality developments that they bring to our city. And this development in particular, they are not asking for its own change. That's what I think most of us want. There are some challenges with this property. We're basically trying to fit a square peg into a slightly smaller square hole. It's not a round hole, but it's a little bit different than what we would do if we just lived in a perfect world. With respect to the request, I'm certainly fine with a lot 20 exception. I understand that it's, you know, different than all of the other lots. I'm okay with the setbacks, so that we can fit the lots in with the roads. I'm okay with the 4100 South, with the masonry wall, although I would want some trees, perhaps, along that wall, so that it's even more buffered from the street. But the one thing that I would have issue with is the change of the building materials. We have recently, and with much effort, tried to increase our standards. And not that Ivory Homes don't, in most respects, meet our standards or exceed our standards, but I hesitate very much at creating a precedence shortly after we... much at creating a precedence shortly after we have gone through our point system and spent that effort, that we are not serious about those kinds of regulations and upgrades that we have requested. Those are my comments.
Thank you for the comments. Councilman Rushton.
Mayor, I'll throw in a few comments and then just make a motion, because we have talked about this application, I think, quite a bit, and kind of by default, with some of the other developments going on in the city address, you know, some of the issues that have gone on with it, and where we're at, and where we're trying to get to. As Mr. Gambrilis stated, that as the mayors and councilors from various cities came through, you know, the showcase neighborhoods of West Valley City were in large part the Ivory subdivisions, and this one will no doubt fit in with their repertoire of work, and will also be a landmark spot for a city, so I'm excited to move forward and get them on their way to making this the subdivision that it could be. So without hashing some of the points that Councilman Buehler did, that I feel that I'm, and that the council's probably on a lot of those same pages with that, so I would just like to move that we approve the development agreement with a couple of quick exceptions, namely that Item 9 would also provide a street tree planting plan for the backs of 4100 South to address those lots not being as deep, and then remove all exceptions from the development agreement regarding exceptions for our exterior building materials.
Motion is before us, do we have a second? Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
So the street trees are on the resident side of the fence, the cinder block wall, not the street side, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
You know, it's somewhat, just to the comment, this would be something that Steve and the applicant will go through, but it kind of includes it, but it kind of doesn't to where it says, there'll be a street tree planting plan for development, and they'll be along all residential roads, and so I'm assuming it means fronts, but I think with this, it's also the back with 4100 South and it being a little bit smaller, and also just backs on 4100 South, which is also another one of our discussions of just the character and makeup of that street. That'd be good.
Further comments? With that, then, let's see, we had a motion by Cory Rushton, and the second by Councilman Lang, or Councilman Buehler. Okay. So it's properly before us, seeing no further discussion, we'll place it for a vote, all in favor of approving Ordinance 14-138, a development agreement with Ivory Development, 4100 South, 70th West, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. With that, we go to Item Number Eight, Application S-9-2014, final plat approval for summer subdivision at 3662 South, 60th West. And I've been too involved, I'm going to need a little help on these, I guess I should have reviewed this agenda more than I did for tonight. If you could ask me about McCory, I can tell you all about it. Get this one up. And so, rather than delay that, Mr. Powell, would you just introduce that?
Sure. You bet. We have an application by Mr. Austin Summers, this is a final plat approval, and we're talking about two lots on just under half an acre.
If I could get the picture up, if it would come up, I'd have to remember. With that introduction, then, maybe being the only one whose computer is not working fast, okay, there it is, now we're finally got it up. To the council for discussion or action. Councilman Rushton?
I have one further question on this. Under the Staff Agency concerns, it talks about, let's see, under Public Works, it says authorization required of ditch water users. Where do we get the authorization from on that? I mean, does that have to be everybody that uses water from that has to sign up on it, or is it a majority, or is it the company that would be in charge of it?
That's a very good question, Councilman Rushton, I would want to refer that one to either Mr. Lehman or Mr. Willerson, Mr. Lehman's probably quickest and best suited, however.
Not even sure how many this would affect, but.
That's a good question. Because we don't know every situation that exists with existing water situations, irrigation water, we have a standard condition that we require the developer, if they have irrigation systems in their property, to seek out those canal companies, irrigation companies, ditch masters, to show them how they intend to handle the irrigation water and/or tailwater that may impact the property. So it may not be a condition that's applicable to this particular development, it's really a catch-all condition, just to ensure that we're protected.
Thank you. Further discussion or comment? Mayor, I'd move for approval of Application S-9-2014. Councilman Buehler places the motion before us, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilwoman Lang, motion is properly before us, any further discussion or comment? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote, all in favor of Application S-9-2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously in favor. We now go to Application S-10-2014, by Paul Thomas, and this is for Apple Orchard Estates, 3610 West and 60th, excuse me, 3610 South and 60th West. Get this one up again. Jeez, great. And again, Mr. Powell, would you take and do a brief introduction on this?
Sure, you bet, no problem, Mayor. So this is another final plat approval, I think you mentioned that, this one's slightly larger than the last one that we just considered, it's 16 lots on under just six acres. It's an infill subdivision that was rezoned some years ago, and it's just actually now coming to fruition from a development standpoint.
Okay, thank you for keeping me on task here, for helping me. Then to the council for discussion or action.
Mayor? I would move for approval of Application S-S-10-2014.
Okay, the motion is before us, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Rushton has the second, the motion is properly before us, do we have any further discussion?
I would just point out that, as we discussed in the, in our study meeting last week, that although it's zoned as R18, the lot size just ranged from a little over 11,000 square feet to 15,000 square feet, and I think it's roughly around 12,000, so some good sizes here in Apple Orchard Estates.
Thank you. Further comment? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote, all in favor of Application S-10-2014, final plat approval of Apple Orchard Estates, 3610 West, 60th, now I keep saying it, 3610 South, 60th West, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, motion passes unanimously. We now go to our consent calendar, we have five items on our consent calendar, a routine easement agreement, that's 14-139, a storm drain easement for the school district, 14-140, a delay agreement for some property, 14-141, 14-142, the city manager's appointment of Alan Pierce, Clean and Beautiful Committee, and then 14-143, another Clean and Beautiful Committee appointment, Terry Manny Pierce. Do you want to take those individually, if not, make a motion for all together?
Mayor, I would move approval of the five resolutions of our consent agenda.
We have the motion before us by Councilman Rushton.
Second.
Second by Councilman Buehler, it's properly before us, any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote, all in favor of approving the resolutions on our consent calendar, all aye, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion passes unanimously, consent calendar is done. Then we go to Item Number 10 on our agenda, unfinished business, this is Application GPZ-6-2013. This is the property, and there are three different ordinances here that we will deal with, 14-34, 35, and 126, but this is the property at 4758 West, 4100 South. Then to the council for comment or action.
Motion to approve the application number GPZ-6-2013.
Now, I think we need to take three separate motions here, so this would be a motion on Ordinance 14-34.
So which is Ordinance Number 14-34?
Yeah.
Okay.
That motion is before us, do we have a second?
I'll second that, on its own change, correct?
General Plan Amendment.
General.
What was that?
General Plan. So we have that, Councilwoman Lang seconded that, we have the motion properly before us, further discussion? Councilman Rushton?
Thank you, seeing as there's three items on this, I'll try to adjust my comments to fit all of them. This first one with the, did I say two, or there's three? The first one with the general plan change is, I think, the easy, obvious, no-brain one that, you know, was, I think, in the back of everyone's head for a general plan change, and really even the amendment on the zone change to match what's going on in the other four corners is pretty easy. So the one that I still struggle with is the actual development agreement, once we get down to the bottom one, and, you know, part of, part of the problem with it, as I brought it in the other meetings and even last week, was just how the plans to integrate it more with the library complex, you know, there is, and it seems like by default, there's kind of not a plan, it's just kind of to go for it. In fact, I even took matters into hands and called the county, you know, library people to see if I could get an answer to where, you know, they're even aware of this, what, you know, where they would like to see things go, what they're for, what they're against, and, you know, didn't, didn't receive an answer on that as of right now even. And so, so I would just urge approval of the first two items, and then we get to the third items, I guess I would like to have some convincing to go along with the, on the development side of it, so.
Thank you for further discussion, Councilwoman Lang.
So one question, Cory, did anybody have an answer on removing the fence?
No, and I mean, this is, I guess, sort of the confusion is that, you know, we've heard that maybe the applicant has had discussions, we've heard that, you know, maybe the city staff's had discussions, and then, you know, the county, etc., hasn't got any discussions on it, so I just would hate to think that we're going to move forward and pass that to where it's basically just a lot of, I could maybe hearsay, you know, on it, that, you know, "Oh, I thought you checked, oh, I thought you checked, oh, I thought you checked," you know, and really not having the definitive answer on that. So that's, you know, that's the large, large chunk of it, I mean, I'd obviously like to hear your comments just on the rest of the development agreement, you know, as we go forward, that we've talked about pitch and some of the other stuff, but I think that's, that's my main question, because I think if it's, we're going to take it to be commercial or residential commercial, like somehow it should melt into the neighborhood and not, you know, be East and West Berlin, you know, sort, so.
And Councilman Buehler?
And my thought on this, on all of these items, is the same as I expressed before, that I'm opposed to the parcel-by-parcel decision-making on 4100 South, we ought to take an overall look at it and make an overall decision around it then, one parcel at a time, even though, I'll throw in the caveat, that changing this particular corner to commercial would seem to make sense.
Thank you. Further discussion? And let's see, we did have a motion and a second on this, so.
On, on just the first item, the general plan.
14-34. So we are just doing Ordinance 14-34, so we'll place that for a vote, all in favor of the general plan change, please say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a second, do we have a second? Okay, thank you.
Opposed?
No.
No. Mal-voting, no also.
Yes, when there's doubt, I would like to do a roll call, it's easy when it's unanimous. Let's do a roll call and just make sure you get it.
Mrs. Lang? Aye. Mr. Buehler?
No.
Mr. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
No.
Mr. Northfeld?
Aye.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
So it's three to three.
Open to four.
Oh, two to four. Oh, okay, I guess I should have paid more attention. Then with that, we move to our next item on the agenda, and that passed, 42. So we are now at Resolution 14-35. This is a zoning change for the same property. It's currently zoned R18, neighborhood commercial, C1. To the council for comment or action.
Mr. Mayor? I would move for approval of Ordinance 14-35, as I do not see residential working in this location any longer.
We have the motion before us, do we have a second?
Second.
Councilman Northfeld's the second, motion is properly before us, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll place it for a vote, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, with the council's permission, I know we're in the middle of the vote, but I should, I think I'm going to do a roll call vote on each of these, with the council's permission, let's just do roll call.
Mrs. Lang? Aye. Mr. Buehler?
No.
Mr. Hume?
Yes.
Mr. Rushton?
No.
Mr. Northfeld?
Aye.
Mayor Bigelow?
No.
Excuse me, I voted on the wrong one, yes on this one, I think, sorry, announcing my next vote. I apologize for that confusion.
That was the same 42.
That was the same 42, it passes. Now we take Resolution Number 14-126, authorizing the city to enter into a development agreement on the same property that we have been discussing, to the council for discussion or action.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion for continuance to give the, my concern with this development agreement is, I'm not comfortable with the exterior on 4100 South, and so I'd like a better updated what would fit our ordinances there, and then also that would give time for either staff or the applicant to get with the county. I know one of the big concerns on that property is the fence, and if that should be removed or not, and if there's any inclination on the county's part to be willing to do that, just to kind of get rid of the dead spots, to make it more visually acceptable to some of the members. So I would say date nonspecific, so that they have the time to address both of those issues.
Okay, that motion is appropriate for us, do we have a second? Okay. That motion is appropriate for us. Do we have a second? Councilman, you.
May I make a comment?
Well, I'll second it, and then you will have the...
I think we, yeah, because if we don't get a second, then it dies for lack of a second. Councilman Rushton has seconded the motion. The motion is properly before us. Now, further discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. I was thinking about that some lot, about the fence between the property and the library, Hunter Library. But to be honest with you, the most I'm concerned about when they were houses there is the quarter then, and more opportunity for people to do some stupid thing there than the residential, the commercial zoning. The reason, because if commercial zoning will have more people in and out a lot, that will eliminate that problem with the, we're concerned about the fences, the concrete fences, and maybe people they hide behind, maybe behind the bus or maybe behind the fence and create some problem. But I see that residential is more like two houses that old ladies had in the past. She has more problem if we have a commercial district there because, like I said, more people in and out, then I think that will. You know, the other thing is we cannot find the resolution or we cannot find the way to solve wrong because my colleagues there, Cory Rushton, they asked people around there, and they have given no definition or not, basically no resolution about what the fence there, they cannot give the concrete answer for that, the concrete wall there. So I think it's, there's no concern about the fence if we have a commercial zoning.
Thank you. Further discussion?
No, I guess just, thank you. Just to go along with that, I mean, maybe there is a totally legitimate reason or use or, you know, maybe it's going to be prominently displayed as city art at some point, like, I don't know. But I just would hate to plan something and get it to an agreement without having all the facts before us. And so I think that Councilman Lang is wise to maybe just give it some time to look at it as well as, you know, there are some other issues that she's concerned with or somebody else, just as far as the frontage on it, that, you know, it's commercial now, it's, the zone's been changed, the plan's been changed, it's going to go forward with commercials. So if we're going to do that, let's just try to get the best possible product and use that we can out of it going forward with the agreement. So I speak in favor of continuance.
Okay, further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Mrs. Lang? Aye. Mr. Buehler?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
No.
Mr. Rushton?
Aye.
Mr. Northfeld?
Aye.
Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
We would ask the staff to, you know, work on this and see if we can get those questions and concerns answered working with members of the council.
Absolutely, Mayor. We'll be glad to do that. And I think those are fairly easily addressed, or at least clear questions, so we can get the answers back on that. I might just mention on the applicant's behalf, they also have tried to get in touch with the county and the library system for an answer along those lines as well, and they haven't been answered either. So apparently just need more time to work through the process.
Thank you very much. That motion passes then, and we will have that continuance at a future date. I believe that there is no need for an executive session that I'm aware of. But I did remember I do need, have to pass along some information to Chief Russo and Mr. Willerson, Mr. Pyle, if that's okay, right after this meeting. With that then, any further business from the council or comments? Seeing none, we'll accept one last motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.